Good evening and welcome, everyone. I would like to now call to order the October 25th meeting of the Albany Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Donaldson, Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Minotti.
Here.
Chair Geeson Fields.
Present. All right. And then our next item up is ex parte communications. Are there any ex parte communications that a Commissioner would like to disclose? No? Okay, seeing none, I will close that item and move on to our consent calendar. We have a full consent calendar tonight. We have six items, I believe, and so I'll try to hopefully explain this clearly, but I know it's always confusing. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and/or administrative, and thus everything on the consent calendar will be considered and voted on by a single vote of the Commission. Consent calendar item can be pulled from the consent calendar for individual discussion if anybody in the audience or any of the Commissioners would like to pull an item. Unless an item is pulled from it, we will just vote on that group of projects that are presented, and there won't be a discussion. So, I'd like to ask, is there anybody in the audience who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
We do have a speaker card for 1108 Curtis.
Okay, 1108 Curtis. Okay. And then, just to be clear too, because I know we have a few people in the audience, I give everybody a shot here. On the consent calendar tonight, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes from October 11th. We have the lower level addition at 838 San Carlos. We have the lower level and rear addition at 966 Ventura. And the parking waiver for the optometry office, 1049 51 Solano. And also, the second story rear addition at 1108 Curtis, which will be pulled. And also, the addition at 735 Cornell.
And for anyone here for Cornell, that is not going to be acted upon tonight. We're recommending that it be continued to November 8th so that the story poles can be installed.
I'm sorry, were you going to say something? Okay. Okay, so those are the projects under the consent calendar. If anybody would like to pull any of those from the audience, we can. I would personally like to pull Planning Application 16-032, the design review modifications for a lower level addition at 838 San Carlos. And then I just have a couple of quick comments slash, I guess, requirements. I don't think we necessarily need a full discussion of that project. And I guess unless there are any other comments, we'll just pull those two items.
I would like to pull Planning Application 17068, the parking waiver for optometry office at 1049 51, and we'll also try to keep that brief.
Okay, great. Okay, and so then unless there is, I'm open to a motion on the remaining items on our consent calendar.
I'll move approval then of the consent calendar, which will now include the minutes of October 11th. The project at 966 Ventura, Application 17065, and the continuation of the project on Cornell, 735, is that right? I think that's what's left. Go ahead.
Because you're recused on 735, I'm not sure that you can move that.
Move to continue it, or? Okay, so I can't make any motion on 735 Cornell, so.
I'll make a motion unless-
I can't make the motion, then.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move, excuse me, thank you Commissioner Donaldson, to move the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of October 11th, as well as the Planning Application 17-065, design review for two-level rear addition at 966 Ventura. And also, Planning Application 17-059, the continuation of the 735 Cornell project.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I'll abstain on 735 Cornell.
Okay. Okay, so if you are here for those projects that I just referred to, your project has been approved. There is a 14-day appeal period, so please do not make any permanent decisions or moves, if you will, with your project until after that 14-day appeal period is over, and that includes keeping story poles up, if you have story poles up. Okay. And so then we have three items remaining on the consent calendar, 5-2, 5-4, and 5-6. I'll start with, what is this? Planning Application 16-032, the design review modifications for a lower level addition at 838 San Carlos. We don't need to necessarily do a full presentation, maybe we will, I'll just, basically my comments were that I'd like to request, and I guess if the Commissioners are willing to acquiesce to this, I'd like to request that the built-in planter at the front of the project be, have a wood lap board siding to break up the amount of stucco, since it's just purely stucco building, and also to include a wood cap or coping at the top of the railings at the stairs. Basically, just trying to give it a little bit more of a diversity of materials and aesthetics, so it's not a giant monolith of stucco.
Okay.
Those are my only two comments or changes. And so if the Commissioners are open to accepting those, I'd be willing to approve the project as presented with those additional changes.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, I don't have any concerns about that, but would like to hear from the applicant if they're here, if that's acceptable.
Sure, sure. Would you like to come up to the podium, please, speak into the mic? We're recording this, so we need to ask you to speak into the mic.
And specifically, I was just curious to hear your input on the suggestions that Commissioner Geeson Fields provided.
Yes, so I'm Lily Shee Storger, and so I, if I can just ask you what you mean by wood, you just want to-
So similar to the existing building where it has the horizontal lap board wood siding, so at the original up here. Basically, I want to do this finish, the wood lap board siding.
Instead of stucco.
Yeah, just at the built-in planter.
My understanding is of cost, and I want to keep it as economical as possible.
That shouldn't really affect the cost at all, it's simply switching from cement stucco to wood.
To wood.
Yeah.
And my understanding from what I've done in research is that the wood is much more expensive, and that, maybe I just don't know what is available here.
I mean, in my experience, it hasn't been a cost prohibitive difference in terms of the pricing of wood siding versus cement stucco.
Okay.
And you could argue that you'd save in labor costs because the wood siding is easier to install and quicker, rather than having laborers do the three-part stucco, bring up metal lap. So that would be my sort of comments, which I totally understand if you don't want to do that, you're welcome to. I just, I personally won't be able to approve the project as presented. The other Commissioners may, which it's totally fine, it's just my-
The side yard is not viewed from the public that much. Are you talking about extending the whole-
No, 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 I'm just, if we go back to elevations, it's really small, minor thing, simply to the proposed elevations. So this planter right here, just having it wood siding instead of cement.
Only that part, right, on the front?
Yeah.
That would be okay with me, I mean, I think that's a nice element.
Okay, that's, I mean, that was my intent, was that I think it, A, the building is completely stucco, which is fine, but I like to try to get a little bit of diversity of materials so that it's not this giant, and so this being the front of the home, the public face of the home, I think it'd be nice to have a warmer material, something like-
I agree, I think that would be attractive thing, too.
That would be my suggestion. And so it sounds like you're amenable or acceptable to that change?
I would be, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So those are my only comments, and so I would like to make that, I guess-
If anyone else wants to speak on it?
Oh, sure, sure, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the Commission on this item? No? Okay, seeing-
I'll make a comment.
Sure.
I was thrilled to see this modification to this design. I had a lot of trouble with it the first time around, and I went by and looked at it, and I said, "Whoa, this is great, very nice job," but I would compliment it, so.
Yeah.
I'm really glad you're going to take this approach. It's great, big improvement.
Yes, I agree. Very much big improvement over the last proposed design. Any other comments from the Commission? If not, I'll make a motion, motion to approve Planning Application 16-032, design review modification for lower level addition at 838 San Carlos, with the additional condition that the built-in planter at the front elevation has a wood siding finish rather than stucco, that the railing caps wood. That's it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, your project has been approved with that one condition. Feel free to move forward, although there is a 14-day appeal period, I'm sorry, I'm going to correct myself, there is a 14-day appeal period, so please do not make any permanent decisions or moves until after that 14-day appeal period is over. Otherwise, it's been approved. Thank you. Our next item up is Planning Application 17-068, the parking waiver for new optometry office.
So, I had some questions and comments about this parking waiver, which I emailed earlier to Ann and Christopher, and thank you, Christopher, for responding so quickly and comprehensively to my questions. I did just, I wanted to make a couple comments and suggestions for the findings in particular, in part just to make sure we're really fully documenting things, and because we seem to continue to get a lot of parking waiver requests for the commercial areas, I want to make sure we're trying to, you know, apply consistent metrics. So my suggestions would be, again, specifically in the findings, I just want to make sure we're supporting those. On the first finding, I would, I would like to see some information added to the record to support the finding that the parking demand for the use is less than the required number of spaces, so something showing that the optometry use will not actually generate demand of, you know, more than seven spaces at any given time. And from, just looking at the application materials, it looks like if they're having something like an average of eight appointments a day, and I don't know exactly what the hours are, but it seemed to me that there should be evidence from the application that we can point to that would support that. And would also like to make sure that the findings reflect the open hours of the business to indicate that, you know, this is going to be time-limited, and I'm also not sure if it's seven days a week or not. But with those additions, I support the application, and I think, oh, sorry, one more thing, I do think it's important to reference the existing use, and you did refer in the findings to previous uses, but I think if we could just add something about the existing use and the fact that this is just an incremental change, it's not going from zero spaces required to seven that we're trying to get rid of. So those would be my suggestions, and otherwise, I'm fine to vote in approval.
Excellent, I think those are good suggestions.
Okay, I guess unless there are any other comments or questions of staff, and so are these changes or findings that you'll be able to just simply implement into the current record?
Yeah, they would go into both the current record and the notice of action that gets sent to the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, and to be clear, I do think there's information in the record to support those findings, I just want to tie it all together.
I agree, I think there is.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay, and with that, I guess, unless there are any other comments, I will open it up to a motion for this item.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval upon the application 17068, a new optometry office at 1049 1051 Solano Avenue, with the suggested modifications to the findings and the staff.
Okay.
Do we need to open it up for comment if we commented?
Well, I mean, we haven't had the applicant speak, and this was on the consent calendar, so I'm okay.
I'd second if you're making some changes, you ought to give anybody who wants to talk a chance to talk.
Okay. All right, well, then, at that point, I'm going to do a full, and ask the applicant if they are here, if they'd like to address the Commission, to give us any sort of additional information that might help us understand the project. You're free to address us, otherwise you don't have to, but if you'd like to, you have the opportunity.
Hello, so my name is Ruth, and this is my business partner, Harold. And so I, what was your question? You said-
It was a process question about opening it for public comment. You don't necessarily need to speak.
Oh, okay.
We just want to give the public an opportunity to comment if we made some changes.
Yeah, and so I don't think there are any specific questions of you from the Commission. Commissioner Jennings was simply just directing staff to provide more factual information with the findings to support, to support your project being approved. But if there's any sort of, anything you'd like to just tell the Commission about why you chose this property, or your, you know, what your day-to-day operations are, how many clients you typically have, anything that might just help us understand it better, we're welcome to hear.
Or they could also not say anything, and just see if there's any other public comment.
Yeah, or you can not say anything.
Might as well address six days and things like that. Okay. Yeah, a couple of things I heard that came up was, we are not open seven days a week, we are open six days a week, and we generally schedule our appointments about 45 minutes to an hour, so Ada Day is probably reasonable, we're also not, you know, we take lunch, we take an hour for lunch and stuff out of the day. The reason we would like this location is right now, we're currently renting in Berkeley, and we would rather own a building in Albany to grow our practice. Also, generally, we each work three days a week, so we're usually not both in the office at the same time, seeing patients, so it's not, it's not 16 patients a day.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the Commission on this topic, or this item? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the Commission for a discussion and/or entertain a motion.
Well, I guess I'll move again then for approval of Planning Application 17068, a new optometry office at 1049 1051 Solano Avenue.
Wonderful.
I'll second.
Okay, and just to be clear-
Just with the additions that you had made.
Yes, sorry, with those additions.
The additions that were suggested to the findings.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, there has been a motion, it's been seconded by Commissioner Jennings. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so your project has been approved. There is a 14-day appeal period, so please do not do anything until after the 14-day appeal period is over, but otherwise, your project has been approved. Thank you. And our next item up is Planning Application 17-062, review, design review and conditional use permit for a second-story rear addition at 1108 Curtis. Why was this?
Somebody from the audience wanted to-
Oh, okay. So, should we do a, do a brief presentation?
Look, we have what, one speaker card?
We have one speaker card, and the property owner and applicant are also here.
Yeah, if you could just do a brief presentation of the project.
Yeah, no problem. This is Application PA 17062, Design Review and Conditional Use Permit for a Second Story Rear Addition at 1108 Curtis. The applicant is seeking a Design Review and Conditional Use Permit approval for a Second Story Rear Addition at 1108 Curtis. Subject site is a 3,100 square foot lot with a two-bedroom, two-bathroom, 1,280 square foot house built in 1918. The applicant is proposing to build a 479 square foot second-story addition at the rear of the home to accommodate a new bedroom, half-bath, master suite, and balcony. Addition is proposed to be set back 44 feet approximately from the building face. The applicant is proposing painted cement siding, a wood trellis roof pitch, and gravel top to match the existing home and a skylight. Conditional use permit is required to vertically extend the existing non-conforming west wall 18.38 feet from the rear property line. This will result in a four-bedroom, three-and-a-half bathroom, 1,700 square foot home with a maximum height of 28 feet. Two off-street parking spaces are provided in the existing driveway.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Commission for staff on this project? No? Okay, I will now ask if the applicant's here, if you would like to address the Commission on this project.
Howard McNally, I'm the architect resident of Albany, and actually a neighbor of my client, I live within about a block, so. There's, of the concerns that have been addressed, and I think there is a lady here that wants to talk about the drainage issue, the drainage is one of the conditions of approval, of course, it's number nine, and we're not allowed to allow any runoff from the site to flow into adjoining properties, so we'll definitely abide by that, we don't get a building permitted unless we do it. There already is, in fact, at the instigation of this, I think the same individual, a sump pump has been installed, and the roof drains have been connected to it. What, as far as I know, I'm not aware of any remaining issue, but to the extent that there are any remaining issues, I'm sure we'll be adding foundation drainage to our system for taking care of site runoff. There is, there was a concern addressed by the next-door neighbor to the south regarding privacy and views, and I think that my client might, he's had a discussion with these neighbors, I think he's clarified some things, and he can speak to that.
Hi there. Thanks for taking the time to do this. As Howard mentioned, there was one concern that was brought up to me with my neighbor, and it was a privacy concern, which I had our neighbors go on the roof and take a look, and once they were on the roof, they realized that there was no privacy concern, and they were okay with that. Another concern they had was the views might be obstructed, but then they were happy to find out that from their south side, that's where the balcony is going to be, and the view will perhaps be somewhat obstructed, but not nearly what they had imagined, and therefore, I wrote them an email, they wrote me back, we sent it to Ann, and they did not come today, so I think that we're all good. It's always great when a neighbor, if they have a concern, they come to me, and we could discuss it and come to resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
And now, excuse me, next, I'll open this item up to the public to ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the Commission on this.
So we have one speaker card for Mimi Chin.
Okay.
I'm Mimi Chin, and I live behind 1108 Curtis, and I do have a lot to gain with this project because as they spoke, I, we live, our property is at a lower elevation, so when there is heavy rain, we get a lot of the runoff. So there was, last June, when we just, you know, it just seemed like a flood of water, and it didn't rain or anything, but it caused me to look and peer across the fence to see where this could have been coming from. So I mentioned to John, you know, that your downspouts are just sort of releasing water toward your backyard, and so we talked about it, and he made some changes to it, and so during that time, we did, came to the city, we asked about what were our rights, and we, you know, found out, well, really, you know, you know, by the grace of your neighbors being good neighbors, they wouldn't do that, but there's nothing that, you know, you really can do unless they are filing for a permit to do some kind of construction. And then that's when you can voice your concern to make sure that while that construction's happening, there is great emphasis placed on sort of controlling the water runoff and have it run off the curb side, which is, I believe, that's Albany's requirement. So that's, I'm here technically, you know, to, you know, make that point, because it's really discerning to have, you know, tons of water from all your neighbors that are a little bit higher coming down on your property. As far as the construction, in terms of the view, since we had to tear down a building that was poorly damaged through water and have a new building, so I want to protect my investment, I really found that, you know, we still have our privacy. I do feel like in your backyard, where you can relax, and our bedrooms are facing, are in the backyard looking out, you don't always want to close your drapes every time you think you might, you know, change, or, you know, that type of thing. So, you know, that was really, really important to me, to be able to relax and just lay out in your backyard, and I realize that there are no views, really, from what you're proposing that seems to affect me, so in that regard, you know, maybe I lucked out, you know, I'm happy. So, but I do have to say, you must have a really hard job, because a lot of our lots are very small, and had my building, my new building not be where it is, I think I really would be very nervous about having views looking down onto my backyard. So I want to just bring that out to you, because I know you're going to be facing this a lot. In this case, I feel comfortable with the sightlines, and as long as the water issues are noted and resolved, then I can, you know, rest more comfortably. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the Commission on this topic? No? Okay, seeing no one, I will now close the public comment period and bring it back to the Commission for a full discussion. Is there a Commissioner who'd like to?
Eric, I just had one technical question for Ann. It was on the north wall, the, it's a conditional use permit, and it calls out the west wall, but the north wall has, it's an existing non-conforming distance?
I think the both do. Oh, no, the north wall does, yeah.
North wall, and is that not extended, or maybe I just misread?
The rear, the rear wall, which I think is the west wall, that's non-conforming, and that's proposed to be extended. The rear, the rear wall, which I think is the west wall, that's non-conforming, and that's proposed to be extended.
The north wall won't be extended.
It's not at all?
I don't think so.
Right.
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's actually, so the addition is only centered on basically this addition that was built in the early sixties. So this wall is, I'm sorry, this rear wall is non-conforming, but the sidewalls, I believe, are conforming.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess I'm just kind of speaking out loud here, but correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like you're going to be, and I'm speaking to the applicant, that you're going to be addressing the drainage issues in your plans, and the drainage will be up to code requirements. And it's primarily from the roof, it's just going to be from gutters and downspouts? Is that correct? Capturing the rain? If you wouldn't mind.
There's an, there's an existing sump with a pump that is connected to the downspouts.
Okay.
All except the ones in the front. It's pumped via pressure line to the curb.
Okay.
We will no doubt be improving that system because we're going to be doing some foundation drainage, which will also connect to that same sump. Hopefully, this will be an improvement.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
And you'll be increasing the impervious area, I think.
The impervious area is not affected, we're going straight up.
No, it won't be increasing, will it? No, it won't be, I don't think. The impervious area will be about the same.
Exactly the same.
Exactly the same, yeah. With the footprint of the building is the same, yeah.
We're not, yeah, we're not, we're just going up.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Howard. Well, I mean, I, I'll just throw this out. For those of you who are here who are concerned about this project, I'm glad to hear that the privacy issues in terms of views from the new addition into adjacent properties has been addressed, and those concerns have been worked out with the neighbors. I always appreciate when applicants work with their neighbors to resolve things ahead of time before we have to get involved. I think it makes life better for everybody. And in terms of the drainage issue, as you heard, the applicant will be installing drainage per code requirements and connecting any drainage from the new addition to a sump pump, which should push the water out to the front at the street curb. Sure, if you mind coming up to the mic.
So am I mistaken? Correct me. On the drawing, there might be an area where I guess it's like directing the water to an area that's filled with rocks, sort of like a percolating kind of thingy. So if that's on the drawing and it's in the backyard, the question is, if it's so much rain, like if it's a lot of water, I mean, hopefully there's a sump pump and it's pushing water out. But I'm questioning, what is, what is that on the drawing? Could it be a source of gathering of wa, too much water?
And just to address your question directly, the drawings that I have, that I have access to, don't show any type of landscaping to that effect. And, and so I'm not quite sure, I don't see specifically what you're referring to. It just shows the backyard as a, as a, as a open space, more or less.
Yeah, there's, there's a notation here that notes that there's a perforated pipe and drainage rock, but it looks like that ties into a drainage line going up the driveway, so the sump pump is located here. So it's a, it looks to be a perimeter drain.
And if you're, if you're referring to that note that says drainage rock, that's just a term of art that's used that refers to, refers to rock that's put around French drains or different types of drainage that's meant to allow water to permeate into the ground and reach the, reach the drain. It's not actually typically visible at the surface level. And so that's, I'm assuming that's what that's referring to, rather than any kind of formal sort of landscaping, if you will. So I hope that addresses your concerns. I don't know if there are any other comments from the commission?
I have none. I'd be prepared to move approval, I think.
Okay, I'm open to a motion.
That's fine. All right, and then I'll move approval of Planning Application seventeen oh six two. Both design review and conditional use permit for second story addition at eleven oh eight Curtis.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, your project has been approved. There is a fourteen day appeal period, so please do not remove the story poles until after that fourteen day appeal period is over. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Our next item up is public comment period. The public comment period is available for anyone desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on our agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and under the Brown Act, the commission is only able to receive your comments and defer them to staff. And therefore, such items will be referred to staff and possibly put on our agenda for a following meeting where it can, where we'll have a full discussion. So is there anybody who would like to address the commission on an item that is not on our agenda tonight? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and move on to our next agenda item, which is seven dash one.
So this is a continuance from your discussion in September regarding marijuana regulations. Just to refresh your memory, the city council on June fifth of this year directed that the city continue with the prohibition on medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation, and extend that to recreational as well. So you looked at draft regulations in September and continued it to adate certain pending some language clarification, and ultimately what's turned out to be greater consistency with some of the nomenclature that's identified in state law. So the, the changes before you tonight consistently reference cannabis rather than marijuana for consistency with state law. We've incorporated definitions directly from the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. We've provided clarification on personal cultivation to have minimal, limited exterior evidence and as well as be allowed in accessory structures because they are enclosed. And on the dais, we, we originally had language in there based on the council's direction that they wanted marijuana deliveries to be prohibited, and I had some back and forth with our city attorney last week regarding some language that was in the Marijuana Safety Act, and basically the extent to which we can regulate that. And so on the dais, I gave you a redline copy. So in what you received in the packet, we didn't have that delivery prohibition in there. We are proposing to put that language back into the draft regulations. This would prohibit the commercial delivery of medical and recreational marijuana in the city of Albany to locations within the city limits. And we have, we have our, our legal counsel who, you know, doing some research has verified that that is consistent with the provisions in state law. We're limited in regulating use of roadways, particularly if someone is a licensed distributor. They, they do have a legal right under that act where they can access our roads for the purposes of transportation, but we do have the authority to restrict deliveries to addresses within the city. And so with that, we are recommending that you adopt Resolution twenty seventeen dash zero six that would forward a recommendation to the city council to adopt the draft regulations. And we have our legal counsel present in case you have questions about the legality of what we're doing.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there questions of staff before I open it up to the public? Okay, excuse me. I guess since there's no real applicant, I'll just open this up to the public for the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the commission on this item? No? Okay, seeing no one, no speaker cards? Okay, I will close the public comment period. Let me just make sure, I just want to make sure this gentleman didn't want to address the commission on this agenda item? Okay, thank you. I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for a discussion.
Mr. Chairman, could, maybe, could I start? I'm sorry I missed the last, the meeting when it was discussed. I'm really sorry about that. Do I read this correctly to say that the city council has already made a policy determination that medical marijuana will be prohibited? And that we don't have any discretion to say, wait a minute, let's think about this as a, as a policy matter?
Well-
The retail, commercial side and delivery. The retail and the delivery, I believe.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I think the city council has made a resolution that, that they would like this.
Yeah.
But as I understand it, we have the purview and scope to, to propose whatever we'd like to recommend to the city council.
All right.
That's right, I mean, the council did express a policy preference, but you're not, not in a legally binding way until they, they actually take action to adopt an ordinance. However, they've given a fairly strong indication where they're headed on this. But if the planning commission disagrees or thinks there should be some changes to that approach, you're free to make that recommendation.
Well, then I'll make some comments. I voted, I voted in favor of the ban. I was on the commission at the time, whatever year that was, a few years back. And it was a hard call then, I think. We'd previously had, I think we had an ordinance that allowed it, and then we, we had applications. We didn't ever find a medical marijuana dispensary site, there never was one cited here. And then the council decided we're going to ban them altogether. But we voted on Prop sixty-four not too long ago. It passed overwhelmingly in Alameda County, and Val requested some data, and it looked to me like it passed almost seventy-five percent in Albany.
Seventy-six percent.
Isn't that right? What, seventy?
Seventy-six percent.
Seventy-six percent. So, so I say, this, this bothers me a little bit. This is a disconnect. So we have seventy-five percent of the voters saying recreational marijuana, they favor, but we ban it. So what's really happening here is that we're saying, and I don't think it's very responsible of us, we're saying, go to Richmond to get it, or go to Berkeley to get it, because we know, in fact, it's going to be available in Richmond and Berkeley, just like it is now. It's kind of a NIMBYism thing, and it bothers me that I, that I'm being asked to participate in this. I, I, I'm sure that the police chief doesn't want the trouble of having to worry about, about having one of these places in Albany, and that this is an expeditious thing, it makes it easy for the council. The council people don't have to have the, the hearings on it and the controversy that would come, come to them when someone came to us with an application for a dispensary, a recreational dispensary. And I, you know, I, I really thought about this, and I, it, it kind of bothers me in a public policy way that we have that, that mandate from the voters who are saying, this is something we want. I agree, it's still illegal federally, and that really bothered me. I, I didn't feel I could uphold my oath and, and, and allow medical marijuana here when it was against the federal law. It was a real conflict for me, and my oath, you know, anyway, it just, it just bothered me at the time a lot. And so I voted in favor of no dispensaries. But cities all over the state are allowing these things. The, the electorate wants to have it in California, the electorate in Alameda County wants to have it, the electorate in Albany overwhelmingly supports it. And it's not, it's not very nice on our part to say, well, go get it next door. It bothers me. It bothers me. And at a very minimum, at a very minimum, I, we should say, this issue should be revisited soon. And, and let's, let's see how things shake out as far as the policing is concerned. Let's find out how the recreational sales go and, and a little bit about that. But at a very minimum, I say, we should tell the council, we're, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this. And you need, you need to step up and accept the, the, let's dig into this, it's hard, it's tough. Let's dig into this as soon as possible when we know a little bit more about how, what really is happening in adjoining cities. At the very minimum, I want to do that.
Well, if I-
That's my thought.
If I may, at one point, I'd like to clarify from our last P and Z meeting where we considered this item. I mean, that was some of the discussion that we had was about, at least myself and one other commissioners, sort of objection to this policy direction, given for some of the facts that you just said and for other facts.
Are we three to two against it? Hmm, that's interesting.
And I think, I, I do think at the very least, I think, including some kind of language that hopefully the city will keep in there, that requires a review of this, a re-review of this, in, I would say, at least one year to then consider changing the regulations. I would, I would think that that would be something appropriate. And, yeah, and so you're not alone in your position.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, at the last meeting, I, I also expressed a lot of similar concerns to what you just raised. And, you know, at the same time, I respect and understand that the, you know, little Albany doesn't necessarily want to be the vanguard in this, in terms of especially opening the doors to recreational, and I, I respect that. I, I do, though, have broader policy concerns, and I think there are good policy reasons to move in a direction of, of regulation, and, you know, including being able to access tax revenue for it. And the fact that, you know, under Prop sixty-four, which legalizes personal indoor cultivation, I frankly am concerned about the, the idea of incentivizing people to put six plants inside their house and grow lights and, you know, not, I, I mean, that is what the state law is. So I, I'm not suggesting that Albany can or should interfere with that, except, you know, to the extent of, of building regulations. But just policy level, I, I don't like the incentive that it sends to encourage people to try this on their own instead of, you know, working within a regulated and taxed system. And I did provide some, some comments, which I know were distributed in the, so setting aside that, I, I said, well, if we are going to pass something, here are some, you know, suggestions, and really appreciate Ann working through those comments and incorporating those. And also incorporating, you know, I, I did suggest at, at a minimum, adding a recital that we encourage the city council to revisit this in the resolution, and that is reflected in the current resolution. I, I do still, so I'm, I'm still not exactly sure which way I want to go with this, but I guess one question is, does the city ever adopt zoning ordinances, excuse me, or other types of ordinances that have a baked-in, I'm sorry, there's so many bad cannabis puns out there. A baked-in sunset provision? Is that ever something that-
Yeah, I mean, the city has the authority to do that on occasion. It's particularly common in, like, an urgency ordinance where the city is banning a use pending the opportunity to develop regulations, and those typically don't remain in effect for any longer than two years. So the, the city can do that. I mean, the alternative is the one you've discussed where you just encourage the council to come back at some period of time and review this. The state is supposed to start issuing licenses by January first. Kind of given the way the state progresses on things, it may not happen that quickly. In a year, there'll probably be a pretty good experience in other communities as to how licensing has gone and what types of issues they've experienced with these facilities, whether the tax revenue is really materialized, and those types of things.
Yeah, so I guess where I'm, where my thoughts are headed on this, so on a high level, I, oh my God, that's another one. I would be inclined, I, I'm personally not sure I can vote in favor of this ordinance. I think I, I would be inclined to vote in favor of this ordinance if it included a stronger statement that was, that was more mandatory in terms of a sunset provision that, you know, that this will expire in, let's say, two years, unless, you know, the city has adopted a new ordinance to, to replace it, and sort of force the, the reconsideration. So again, I would, I would be comfortable supporting it if it had a sunset clause included because it, I, I don't think it's in our interest to try to, you know, quickly throw something together either.
I missed what the, where does it actually say?
That we encourage?
Yeah.
It's a recital in the, the resolution itself.
It's the last whereas.
Yeah.
I just saw it. I think that's, that's good.
The third page of the resolution. And then the last thing I- And then the last thing I will say on this is that I did, well, I have a couple of more minor comments on the, the actual language, so I would still like to come back to those, but if we-
I think I have a couple, too.
Maybe we can-
I guess, yeah, would, I'm just kind of, a follow-up question would be, would that be something, if we revised the recital at the end of the resolution to include specific language and a sunset clause, would that be something that you think would, or is there, like, actual changes to the language of the regulations that you would?
I guess I, I would like to hear staff and city attorney thoughts on that. I'm not wedded personally to a specific form of doing that.
Maybe this'll, maybe this'll add on the continuing conversation here. I hope so. I recall reading some of the things in the documents about, about some reasons for why do nothing is not a good tactic. Will someone, will you refresh my memory about that? What if we do nothing now? And I believe it, it, in some of the documents here, it says, it's better to do, to ban it than to do nothing. Is that right?
I think if, if we don't have any regulations, then we have no way of applying any sort of zoning or land use requirements to the business operation. So, without that, I, you know, it's not restricted in terms of zoning districts or that type of thing.
The state, once the state starts issuing licenses, if you have no ordinances regulating or prohibiting these facilities, then they, they can go in probably to any, any place consistent with the zoning, which would be basically commercial or manufacturing.
So, they might, so then a-
Could start appearing-
So, then a recreational sales might come in and say, well, we're just a standard commercial business.
And not just sales, but, you know, growing, large-scale, growing operations potentially.
Ah.
It's, it's really, to, to the city's benefit to make a policy decision whether you want regulatory approach or prohibition and get something in place prior to the end of the year.
Was, in the discussion, was it the city council's perspective? Did you think that this was kind of an interim, and they wanted to come back and revisit it? I thought I remember that part from-
Yeah. I think my, my general impression was that they wanted to take kind of a wait, wait-and-see approach and see how the licensing works out as a first step and revisit the issue. I don't, I think the prohibition is more an interim solution, and if it can be demonstrated that the licensing is successful and, and there's not a lot of complicating factors, it's something they would be willing to revisit.
My impression as well from the council discussion.
So, well, that's interesting what you say. So, so we could, so we, we do did nothing, then we might be able to see sort of an industrial, an application for an industrial facility in one of the buildings down in the CMX district. That would be a growing-
The only active interest that's been shown is to put in a, a growing operation in, in a warehouse building, one that the city used to house its public works department in.
Okay.
And then, and their, their concept, which was not to the level of an actual application, was a commercial growing and, and wholesale sale of marijuana.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. And that would be, that would be a problem if, yeah, I could see that. All right. Could be a real problem. Yeah, all right.
Just a, a question. Is that a use that, if, if someone wanted to use that warehouse to grow, you know, say tulips indoors, would that require a use permit, or would it just be permitted as a right?
No, any use in the CMX zoning district, whether it's a retail or athletic gym or marijuana, well, not marijuana, but tulips, for example, any of those uses require a conditional use permit.
Okay. So, it's, it's not exactly the case that someone could just walk up to the building counter and say, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. So, there are-
Would it be more than a building permit?
Yeah, okay.
But are-
But I, I mean, I understand in general, and, and I, I certainly agree that it's, it's better to have a, have something written one way or the other, rather than-
There, there are some environmental concerns. Energy usage, wastewater may have different components than typical-
Sure.
Manufacturing facility. So, those are some things that the city would want to take a close look at if there was an actual proposal.
And correct me if I'm wrong, too, part of the issue is that if we were to do nothing and, and we got one of those conditional use permit applications, our purview, though, would still just be, be relegated to the design review of the building, per se, or-
No, conditional use permit.
You would have the normal range of discretion.
Very broad.
Use permit.
Okay.
Okay.
If there was a proposal to put a facility in, in a place that's zoned for it, I guess you'd probably be talking more about a retail storefront type use that could go in with maybe a more limited review.
And if we, and if we wanted to, I guess I'm just trying to think through, like, if we're, if that ended up happening, what would be sort of our ways of, if we wanted to, of prohibiting that application? Like, and we couldn't just say, like, well, you can't do it because you're a, a medical cannabis dispensary. We'd have to come up with some kind of-
There'd have to be some tangible, you know, health, safety, or general wear concerns that caused the application to be turned down. And in the case of a, say, retail storefront where it's zone commercial, there's no requirement for discretion or review typically unless you're altering the exterior. And once it's established, then there's a vested right to continue that use. So, then your, your options become more limited.
The, I do think it's, it's important to note, though, there's a state licensing overlay. And state licenses for any commercial cannabis operation can only be issued if the activity is allowed in the, under, you know, in the, the local jurisdiction. That doesn't, the, the regulations are kind of up in the air right now, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the city has to expressly say, you can do it here. So, it could be silent. However, I, I do think it's important to note that there's going to be a rigorous state licensing scheme in place as well. And if, if a business was found not to meet the criteria for state licensing, I think that would be an independent reason for the city to say, you can't, you know, you, you can't be here. So, I, I think, I, I just wanna emphasize that I think even in the absence of an express prohibition, there may be other tools that the, the city has to, especially for, for safety and, you know, welfare type issues. There's always public nuisance and, and other enforcement tools, but-
Okay.
I generally agree with the discussion going on and kind of can support what Director Jennings is, has been talking about. I did have a, actually, a couple of questions. One's technical, but on the revenue side, I, I happened to go this weekend, Albany Unified had a series of outreach things about a $2 million shortfall this coming fiscal year and more ahead. And I, and I'm not exactly clear where the revenue stream here goes, but are, if we ban entirely commercial use, does that, if I read it right, does it, makes us ineligible for any of those state revenues? Is that accurate? Or at least most of them?
I don't remember how that works, but there's definitely, there's some provision, if you take certain actions locally, that you're, you become ineligible for grant funding. I don't, I don't recall what the trigger is for that prohibition.
The LAO report said something about sixty percent going to youth education. And so, and it wasn't specific to schools. It was more, it seemed around drug use, things like that. But it, it was pretty broad, and I assume the state's still defining it. But we're not, we wouldn't be, if I read it right, we wouldn't be eligible for any of that if we banned this.
City typically is not engaged in conducting health and welfare type programs or, you know, those, those types of programs that would likely be eligible to receive the grant money. So-
And then I had one, this is more of a detailed, technical question, but in the resolution on page one, one thing that just caught my eye was, uh, for some of the rationale for why we need to do this. In area, in comment area two, it says, increase pedestrian and vehicular traffic. And I, I guess I'd like to remove the pedestrian "an", because I don't see that as anything harmful, given the policies that we have.
That's a good point.
And then-
Was that in the resolution?
It's in the ordinance language.
On the ordinance, yeah.
Wrong place.
It's page five of the, oh, well, if you have the Adobe file. It starts out saying, under purpose intent number two, protect citizens from secondary impacts. Anyway, I would propose that we strike that pedestrian "an". And then I had, given, you may not have an answer to this, but with this addition about where it says, the thing you've handed out here, marijuana deliveries prohibited, do we have any idea how that would be enforced?
It'd be a big challenge. I mean, the police would have to either hap-, basically catch somebody in the act. I mean, happen to stop them on a traffic stop, find out that they're transporting marijuana for a delivery to an address within the city. It's unlikely that, that would be a, a high priority for law enforcement.
Yeah, that's what I was, okay. And so, and the last thing on here is, it says marijuana deliveries, and do we wanna make that cannabis there, or?
Yeah, we do. Thank you for putting that out.
I just have one technical, um, sort of comment, and then I will open it up to you for further comment. I'm just thinking of, I guess, section G, the newly added part for the marijuana deliveries prohibited. And just kind of in my cursory review, I found, I think it was Contra Costa County's Urgency Ordinance 2017-03, where they had language for that. Basically, it has the same intent, but it, it uses different language, if you will. Where it just says, it is not a violation of this ordinance for any person employed by a licensed marijuana delivery service to travel on a public road within the city of, I changed it to, within the city of Albany for the purposes of delivering marijuana to persons located in a city or county where the delivery of marijuana is not prohibited. Basically trying to, rather than just saying, you can't deliver it to Albany, more globally saying, you can use our roads to go through to another town, but you just can't deliver it to a location in Albany. So, I don't know if that-
Yeah. As, as a clarification of what I understand to be state law, I think that's an appropriate thing to put in the ordinance.
Technical comments, then. All right. I had, I, I was stymied a little bit by the definition of cannabis. And here, so, the first line, cannabis means all parts of the plant cannabis, da-da-da. And then you move down a couple of three sentences, and it says, cannabis does not include the mature stalks of the plant, fiber produced from the stalks. So, it, it can't be all parts of the plant and then exclude the stalks, to me. I, I, I saw, what?
I took that directly from state law.
Directly from state law?
Yeah.
That's what I feared. I thought maybe you'd done that.
You can do this kind of review before you pass the statute.
You're right.
What you're saying makes sense, Doug.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um-
Go on.
Did you have any other technical comments?
Not, no, not, not right now. No. And I appreciate very much all of the additions you made, you know, that, that I saw in red lines, and that's great.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah. And-
This is fun.
That's very good.
Um, oh, sorry.
No, I don't think I did. I had questions about the delivery clauses, and, but we've already discussed that. So, I feel better about that now.
So, um, my one remaining technical comment that, that wasn't covered is in section, subsection E of the ordinance. It's talking about prohibiting commercial cultivation. And then as a subset of that, it talks about a nursery, and then it talks about manufacturing. I just, I would offer that manufacturing is a, is a totally separate thing from cultivation, and that if we wanna capture that concept in here, it should really be its own standalone section. So, that is technical, but I, I think it's important, you know, to the extent that the city is moving in the direction to prohibit all of this stuff, even on an interim basis, we don't want people trying to find loopholes, like, well, this isn't really cultivation. Because it is a totally different licensing category. It's managed by, like, from the, the state's perspective, cultivation and manufacturing are regulated by two totally different agencies. And so, yeah, it, it's not really a subset.
Okay. So, we would create a new subsection, create, let's say, F, and then have manufacturing sites independent of the commercial cultivation.
Yeah, I would suggest to do that. Cannabis nursery is a subset of cultivation, so that's, that first sub-point seemed fine.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding the location, the reference.
It's on the top of page five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. E two. Oh, yeah, I see. Manufacturing, okay.
Other than that, I thought all, the, the revisions looked, looked good.
I had one other question. Do we, so for the UC properties in the Giltrac, do we have, does this regulation apply to that area?
Well, I guess-
They're generally exempt from our zoning ordinance when they're engaged in educational activities. So, student housing, research, things of that nature. When they do something that is outside their educational mission, such as the UC Village Project, then we do, we do have regulatory authority. So, for example, if there was a proposal to put a facility in one of the retail properties there that's part of that project, then this would apply.
If they did a marijuana research facility on the Giltrac, then that's them. That's their thing. Yeah, I get it.
But like, the community garden, it wouldn't be allowed because it has to be indoors, right, for the most part? Unless, unless there's a-
Well, I think if, if they're doing it for the purposes of academic research, they don't have to comply with our local requirements.
That's a bit of a gray area, because it's, you know, it's not, I don't know if they're doing research there or not, or it's just a community activity that they're doing as kind of an adjunct of their educational mission. I suspect unless it's clearly outside the scope of their educational mission, we probably wouldn't be trying to regulate them.
So, I don't know if others had more comments on this, but to, to bring it back, I, I guess I just, I would like to propose, and I can do this through a motion if, if we want to, if we're ready to do that. But I, I would propose that we, that we add a, a sunset clause. And again, I, I'm, I think that two years is something that would provide enough of a, a data set to kind of see what's working for other jurisdictions and what's not, and provide some, some good examples that Albany could draw from as others are refining their ordinances, while not waiting so long that we're really deferring, I think, the, the benefits of moving into a more regulated space. And obviously, the, a sunset doesn't mean you can't revisit it sooner. So, I, that would be my suggestion, that we actually write in a, a two-year sunset provision to the ordinance. And I would, I would support the ordinance if it included that provision, as well as the other technical changes we've talked about tonight.
No, I, I-
Be two years from now, or two years from when state licensing is initiated?
Well, I was thinking two years from-
Now.
From when the council acts.
From when the council-
When the ordinance becomes effective.
From the date the ordinance becomes effective.
Becomes effective.
Which is thirty days after a second reading at the council.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is probably not too far off from January 1st, anyway, if this-
Right. Yeah, right.
Stays on track.
I mean, I would be, I would be more than happy to support that sunset clause. And I would actually like to add additionally, where, where you had the recital, we have the recital that's added where it says, whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission encourages the reevaluation of city policies related to cannabis after state licensing has been initiated, I would actually like to make that even more specific and say, Planning and Zoning Commission encourages the reevaluation of city policies after twelve months. And then also including the sunset clause that we're giving a, a year to sort of-
I'm fine. I think that's good.
Work and figure it out before it's actually sunsetted or reevaluated.
Okay. I'm, that's good. Mm-hmm.
And however we do it, however, staff and the city attorney feel is most appropriate to incorporate that. I'm-
So, we need to move, we need approval of the resolution? Is that what we need?
Yeah, it's, uh, with those changes. It's Reso 2017-06.
And we can craft some language to add into the ordinance, the proposed ordinance on the sunset.
Comment.
Great.
Anybody having a problem removing the pedestrian activity piece?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm-
No, agreed.
I'm fine with that. Yep. And I will, I'll email you my, the specific language for that clause G, the marijuana deliveries prohibited.
Okay.
Just so you have that, too. So, I mean, I, unless, are there any other thoughts on this, or?
No, I, I, I think, I saw a motion is appropriate, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I can make one if you want, or if you want.
I can, go ahead.
Oh, sure. I will, I will move to adopt Resolution 2017-06 with the addition of a, a two-year sunset clause after the, the effective date of the ordinance, and with the other technical revisions that we've, we've talked about tonight, and defer to staff on the, the final language.
And the, the twelve-month-
Review.
Yes, and including- Yes, and including, yes.
A real review within twelve months of when the licensing is effective, is that right?
The recital to encourage the council to revisit this topic starting twelve months after, after licensing goes into effect.
Awesome. Okay, there's a, there's been a motion, I will second it. So, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this resolution has been approved with the changes technical and policy-wise.
Okay.
Good. And our, our next item up is planning application 17-051, design review for a second-story rear addition at 1049 Canes.
Yes, this is design review for a second-story addition at 1049 Canes. Some background on the property. The subject property is a 3,750 square foot lot within an existing two-bedroom, one-bathroom, 870 square foot home built in 1930. City records show that the previous property owners did minor repair work to the home. Kitchen remodel, parking strip repair, and foundation repair was done. The current owner purchased the property in December of 2016. Prior to the purchase, unpermitted work was done to the home, including interior demolition and window replacement. Here's a street view of the property today. Project requests, the applicant is seeking design review approval for a second-story rear addition. At the ground level, they're proposing a 388 square foot addition and remodel to accommodate a master suite, half bathroom, interior staircase, and an attached single-car garage. The second-story addition is proposed to be 826 square feet and will accommodate two bedrooms, a bathroom, and a master suite. Here's the existing building elevation, and here's what's proposed. Exceptional design. Projects which exceed a .45 FAR are subject to exceptional design as reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Exceptional design treatments include a covered porch entry, varying materials for the exterior of the home, architectural brackets, true divided light windows, and a rear patio area with support columns matching the front of the home. Parking. Two existing off-street parking spaces are provided by the property in the detached garage driveway. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing detached single-car garage and proposing to build a 240 square foot attached garage. Three off-street parking, excuse me, three off-street parking spaces are proposed for the home, one in the attached single-car garage, and two in the existing driveway out of the required front, back area. One correspondence was received by staff voicing concerns over basic site regulations. Photos were also submitted to staff showing views into the subject property by the same correspondence. Project is categorically exempt from CEQA. In recommendation, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review and approve the proposed project subject to the attached findings and conditions of approval.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? So, if, if the applicant's here, and they would like to present their project to the commission, we would be more than welcome to hear them. No?
Conrad, is the property owner here for 1049 Canes?
Okay, if, if not, then I will move to, I'm sorry, before I even said that, were there any questions of staff on this project? No, okay.
It's not here, I have questions for the applicant.
Well, maybe they'll show up during the public comment period. So, okay, the applicant is not here, and so now I will bring it to the public comment period and ask if there is anybody in the audience who'd like to address...
We do have two speaker cards. The first speaker is John Dickman, and the second speaker is Diana Sloat.
Okay, great.
My name is John Dickman, and I've lived at 1050 Stanage Avenue for almost forty years. I want to raise my concerns over the proposed development at 1049 Canes. While my discussion with the city planner has indicated that the proposal meets the letter of the law, I do not think that it matches either the spirit or the scale of the other houses in the neighborhood. The proposed design comes very close to the absolute maximum allowable for setbacks, open space, and floor-to-area ratios. Specifically, massing the addition at the back of the property is out of character with the other single-family residences in the area. Section four of the city design guideline says that projects that exceed .45 floor-to-area ratio may be subject to extra study in the design review. As you know, this project has an FAR of .542. But of most concern to me is the impact on my own home. Putting a two-story addition in close proximity to the back fence causes this house to loom over our yard. I included photographs in the packet to the planner to help you to visualize this. The proposed design creates early shade in our yard. Currently, I've seen the sun set behind the proposed roofline between 4:30 and 5:00 p.m. As you can see from the photos, there are also direct sightlines from the proposed structure overlooking not only our backyard and deck, but also into the bedrooms, both on the first and second floors of the house. You can see that from the photos taken from inside those bedrooms. Again, the design guidelines state that neighboring homes should be considered in regards to preserving privacy and reducing overall impact. Moving the proposed second story more toward the middle of the lot would ameliorate these problems, and I encourage you to take these factors into account in your design review of this proposal. And a quick process comment, we have received no notice or consultation from the owners who are not resident on-site nor in the neighborhood. We were not consulted. Our first notice of this came when the story, we were at breakfast and the story polls were being pounded, just ten days or so ago. So, unlike the previous speakers who had some kind of amicable discussion, we've received no consultation or information from the people proposing this, and we're really worried they're just going to flip this house.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have somebody else who'd like to address?
Yeah, the next speaker is Diana Sloat.
I'm Diana Sloat, and I live at 1050 Stanage Avenue, and I'm a co-owner for forty years. And I sat just before coming here, on the very first picture, the little tiny deck, John took the picture standing in our downstairs bedroom, and that monolith goes straight up. You just look, 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 and there are bedroom windows and bedroom windows, and right into our, into our bedroom windows, our most intimate part of the house. And in addition, if you look at the second page, this is from our upper bedroom, the triangle to the left cuts out our view of the south tower of the Golden Gate and San Francisco. And that's a big loss, and it's also a loss for the, you know, our eventual sale of the house, if we ever do. I mean, we don't intend to, we intend to age and place the rest of our aging. But I just need you to know that this house is a big impact. It was not good sitting, watching a derelict house for a number of years, so we're glad to have people in there. We want to know, four bedrooms, three and a half baths, what is going in there? You know, what, what are their plans for this, for this house? That's huge on a small lot. And anything else? I think, I think that's about all. It's the privacy, it's the view, and, and it will strongly impact how we live in our house. The privacy is a big deal. You know, we sit and have our tea, watching the sunset. What sunset? Half a sunset now, and from the, that little deck that you're seeing. So, please consider having something done. I noticed that you see only the front of the house here. It's, it's a nice-looking front of the house, but there are no views of the back of the house or the side of the house, so you don't get a feel of the monolith that is going in on the east end of, of their property. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there, excuse me, is there anybody else who'd like to address the commission on this agenda item? And if you haven't, after you speak, if you could just fill out a speaker card, that would be very appreciated.
My name is Eric Akna. I have a different ideas, I'm a thoughter, I can't say nothing against that. I own the house, back to the right or not, I own two houses there, 1051 Kane, 1053 Kane's. And I just want to say, in that area, you see a lot of two-stories apartment buildings right in that area, so that's not the only two-story building they're going to be in that area. So, I, I strongly hope you approve that. It'd be good for the area, improve Albany, so, I can't say nothing wrong with it. So, I own the house 1051, 1053, 1055.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the commission on this topic? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period, and it appears the applicant has not appeared since then.
Right. What I would recommend you do with the applicant not in attendance this evening is continue this to a future date, so that he's present to hear your specific concerns about the project and any refinement that you might require.
I share many of the concerns, and would propose we extend it to a date certain of November 8th.
I'm, I'm open to that. I guess, one thing I would, I'm just going to throw out there, so I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for a full discussion, if need be, would be that we, if there are any comments that any commissioners have about the project, that we just kind of express them now, so that then staff will have them, and if the applicant comes back to them, they can give these comments to them to...
Is that what you were asking, or do you want to just continue it and then...
If you want to offer design feedback, we can provide that to the applicant, and then they can refine the plans further to address your concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful, at least to share kind of higher-level comments we have this evening.
Yeah, I mean, one, one thought is, A, I would like to see, I guess, a landscape plan, since they're going to be doing a lot of work to the whole sort of property, if you will, and if they have any kind of inclusion of privacy, vegetation.
Well, there is a landscape plan.
Oh, is that the very...
It doesn't show anything in the backyard, just a few plants in the front.
Oh, yeah, and I believe they're using the...
Pardon?
You're right, they do, but I think they also are using the old footprint of the building, not the new one?
I think it's a new one, yeah. On the, I'm not sure.
In terms of the landscape plan?
Let me say, generally, the plans are not very good, and they're hard to read, and they're, they're done totally, you know, on the cheap.
For such a big house.
Amateurish, and, and I expect better, and I think we should ask for better, because they're asking for a very high FAR. So, I, I think this, we need much better plans set.
I, I agree, I concur. I would also, along those lines, ask for more details from the applicant in terms of the actual materials they are proposing. I know they're showing some kind of, I'm guessing is a stone on the front and rear elevations, but if they could clarify exactly what type of stone, anything like that. And what else? I would actually recommend that the, the columns, at least in terms of the design of the project, that the columns at the front, at the rear of the project, I guess, that those, that they look to our design guidelines in terms of types of columns that we typically see in Albany and have approved.
Would you like to see the columns, aside from just changed from their current configuration, have more of a tapered look?
Yeah, or I guess, just the, the weird sort of stone base that they have, that then transitions to something, which I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah, we don't know what that is, and there's a very large, open porch there, which could be nice, but there's a very cheap aluminum kind of awning over the front door. As I read the plans, and I may be reading them incorrectly, there's no entryway, there's no nice porch at the front, and it deserves one, if it's going to have excellence in design. It deserves a very nice front porch. Maybe the, the rock work is good, maybe it's not, but it's not detailed, not specified in any details that I, that I, that I like. And so, just, you know, I just think we need a lot more.
Can I just add, it also, kind of, in our tradition, it'd be good to encourage them to reach out to the neighbors to have some kind of discussion beforehand?
I agree, I agree.
Definitely.
And my two comments would be, one, just generally speaking, I would like to see some efforts to soften the massing at the back of the house.
I agree.
I don't have an architectural background, but it just looks like a big hulk of a house at the back, without a lot of consideration to design. And the other thing is, I do think we, we need to explore more what the exceptional design means here, and make sure they're really coming to the table with design features that would allow us to make those findings. And in particular, I, I want to make sure that we're able to find that this is, you know, in, in scale and harmony with existing development in the area, so I think if the applicant was able to work with staff to help us understand a little better how this fits into the neighborhood, and, you know, I understand there, there are neighbors across the back fence, it sounds like they have a two-story, did they, you know, did they do an addition? And I, I'm just kind of curious about the context of the neighborhood. And I do, I mean, I'm familiar with the block, but I just think having some more of that information presented would be really helpful.
The, the existing yard has a, apparently, from the staff report, has a 35-foot-deep backyard, but there's a garage in there. The garage should be taken down. I, I don't, I like the idea of taking down the old garage and incorporating it into the new building. I don't have a problem with that design, but I, I think I do have a problem with that tiny backyard that would result. And I think that the entire addition could be pulled forward and, and put over, I don't know how for, how far forward, but it could be pulled forward quite a bit. And I don't know where the bearing walls are, what the foundation considerations are, but probably 10 feet, and then you'd have a decent, a much more usable backyard back there, and you could still have the garage, the way they're proposing it, and still have the parking spaces, off-street parking spaces on the side, on the north, on the south side. But I, I really would like to see that, that the, that the second story be closer to the center of the lot. And then, if we're, if they are going to go, I don't think it should go up to the .55. I, I think they're really pushing it, and he's just, he's just looking to get absolutely the maximum amount of space here, and not, not thinking about creating an appropriate home. It's just being maxed out, and, and I don't, you know, I don't like it. I know it's a spec buyer, and probably bought a house that was completely tumbled down, and that, that's good. We want, we don't want to have a vacant house there, and we want, we do want him to, he, she, the applicant, to invest money in the house, invest money in the community, but I don't think it needs to be totally, totally, totally maxed out. And, and that would leave, which would leave a very, very small backyard, 18-foot, feet deep. It composes with the code, in R2, it's 15 feet, but it's still not a very big backyard at all, and it just wouldn't have much living space back there. I'd like to see that fixed, and I think that the addition could be pulled forward, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't adversely affect the street view at all, in fact, it might help it if the addition, the second floor were more in the middle of the, middle of the lot. And then, if they are going to go above .45, then I want to see, I'd like to see a better plan set, one that's more easily... plan set, one that's more easily, easily, easy to read. I think things are in here, but really want some that's more easily to read. I want quality windows. I'd like to see, I'd like to see a reconstruction of the front, of the existing front facade that is, is really attractive, takes advantage of that nice porch that's there, has a roof or an overhang over it that is really, this really fits in with the building. And, I don't know, a balanced, a balanced elevation so that the windows are in nice, nicely balanced all along. It's not bad the way it is, but need to look at that. I think they have, may have exposed rafter tails. Yeah, they do, it looks like. I like that. I think that's good. And, but, but make sure that that, that that is carried down on both levels, and it could, it looks like it is. That's good, but let's show us that. Is the old chimney going to stay or go? It looks like it's going to stay. Will it have a gas fireplace or not? Will the chimney be modified? The windows look like they might be inexpensive sliding windows on the ground floor. Let's have good windows down there on the, that would be on the south elevation. I don't know what rooms those are, bedroom, probably master bedroom. Let's have some good windows there. The windows on the front look like they're good, but I'd like more detail about that. The ones on the rear look like they're sliding, inexpensive aluminum ones. Let's have better quality windows there. And I'd really like to know more about what the brickwork is. I see it's on the rear, too, a little bit. It's carried around, but, you know, what's that going to look like? What are the materials? How is it going to be integrated into the porch, especially in the front?
Given the volume of comments--
And I'm bothered that the applicant's not here.
That's what I was going to say. Given, given the volume of comments and requested refinement, I'm actually inclined to recommend that this be continued to our December hearing, because this, this is a pretty substantial list, and I'm not optimistic that the applicant could have these changes done in about the five days necessary for us to prepare a revised staff report, so, as well as do you reach, you know, reach out to their neighbors and explain the project's scope.
I mean, I'm more inclined to just continue to a date uncertain.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
They can come back when they're ready.
Yeah, you can work with them and figure out a good time.
That, that's a better approach, and then for those neighbors who are here, what that means is that when this does come back, you will receive a new postcard with the date and time in the mail. Typically, it's about 10 days in advance. These meetings are held the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, and so we send it out the Friday, not before the hearing, but the week before. So, for example, we would send them out this week for our hearing in November. I tell you, we can, why don't we, we can talk offline about how best to communicate with you regarding notification.
And also, it's out there, one, I would like an updated landscape plan, because I think they're using the footprint of the existing building rather than the proposed building--
Yep.
--in the landscape plan. And, yeah, I concur with most of what Commissioner Donaldson's comments were. I think just a better review of the massing of the project and possibly, you know, changing the roof pitch on the addition so that it's not as steep, maybe a lower slope--
That's good.
--and/or reducing the height.
That's a good comment. That's a good comment. And in times where we, where we're looking for excellent design and we have view issues, view concerns with neighbors, landscaping can help deal with that, and I'd like to see that in a landscaping plan. So there could be a landscape buffers, so.
Something like that.
I think those are all good comments that'll help the applicant kind of move this project forward. And then the last kind of comment I'll make to the audience is, but I'll let you figure this out with staff, or they can help you if you want to come in, but you can always sign up to via the city's website to get, if you, if you get emails at all, it will give you an email update to the new Planning and Zoning Commission meetings with our agenda. So that can be a way for you to automatically get notice, even if you're out of town or whatnot. But staff can help you sign up for that if you need help with that after tonight.
And I know, and maybe I should make one other comment, too, with, to, 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 addressed to the neighbors. We hear your concerns, and not all of them are concerns that we can address because of the nature of the zoning ordinance. You have to understand that. Many people in Albany now want to build up, and lots are small, and it's efficacious to go up rather than spread out. So we see projects at every meeting that are second-story additions. It's the way to go right now and has been for some time. So you have to consider, and we don't protect the views of existing residents. We can't. We go by our own zoning regulations, the height limit, the setbacks, and all of that. And we do have a .55 FAR, and this commission has approved a number of projects in the past five years that have met that, gone up there. We try to do our best to make sure that that's quality design and that the impacts on neighbors are minimized, but they don't get, they won't get eliminated. I can, I'm sure of that.
Well, we're actually in the discussion period with the commission, and so, thank you.
You can respond, you can certainly respond when you see the next design. You can certainly respond when you see the revised design. You have every right to comment on his, on the project as it's changed.
So if you're ready, I can make a motion?
Yes, I am open to--
I would move to continue to a date uncertain, PA 17051, for 1049 Canes.
Okay, there's been a motion, I will second it. So there's been a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this project has been continued to a date uncertain. When the applicant and staff are able to determine a date that this will be on our agenda again, it will be, the public within 500 feet will be notified of the project, and hopefully the applicant will listen to our comments and incorporate them. Thank you. And then our next is new, new business.
Yes, so we are looking for a commissioner to volunteer to serve on an interview panel for our Solano Avenue Complete Streets plan. We released a request for proposals on Friday. We have a closing date of December 1, and we anticipate having interviews, I guess it would be the week of December 11. We, the date and time is to be determined based on availability, but right now, one of you would be interested in volunteering? That would be great.
Yeah, you work, you work, you work. I have grandchildren, I'm really busy. Can't believe how busy I am, but I guess it's me.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Unless you want to do it. I mean, it's fun to do. I, yeah, I've been, on the other end, I've been the proposer so many times in my career as a consultant, it's fun to--
You get to be in the hot seat. You're on the other side.
Yeah, it's fun to be on the other side of the table, but, yeah.
Well, thank you for volunteering for that, Doug.
Week of December 11, so send me emails as this progresses, yeah, and proposals to read beforehand and all that.
Yeah, we sent it out, we, obviously, we have it posted, and we sent it to about a dozen or so consultants, and right now, I think at least half and likely more of those consultants have expressed their intent to submit a proposal, so.
Okay.
A lot to, a lot to look through.
Yeah. Okay.
Will you, will you email me a copy of the RFP then?
And then our next agenda item, our announcements, communication, discussion. I have nothing. I don't know if staff has anything. Okay, with that, I'll move on to final. Our next meeting is November 8, and with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.